Hello and welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. The citizens of Glendale are represented by a seven-member council. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Yvonne Knack of the Barrell District, Councilmember Manny Martinez of the Choya District, Councilmember Norma Alvarez of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Samuel Chevera of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, and Councilmember Gary Sherwood of the Suoro District. Agendas, speaker cards, and printed guidelines for citizen comments are located on a table at the back of the room. If you would like to address the council on a matter which is on the agenda for this meeting, please complete a gold speaker card. If you would like to address the council on a matter which is not on the agenda for this meeting, please complete a blue speaker card. After you have completed the speaker cards, please give them to the city clerk. The speaker's name will then be called at the appropriate time. Please refer to the printed guidelines for citizen comments. These guidelines have been approved by the council and will be followed in receiving comments. Comments will be limited to five minutes in length. Thank you for your interest and your participation in the city of Glendale.
Good evening and welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of June 11th, 2013. We appreciate your attendance and welcome your participation tonight. This meeting is called order. If everyone will please stand, join me with a pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, if you'll remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. First item of business this evening is a consideration of our minutes of May 28th, 2013. It's a regular meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor, I motion that we approve the minutes of May 28th, 2013.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sherwood, a second from Councilmember Martinez to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Your ayes have it, do have it, the motion carries. We have one proclamation tonight. Before I go down to the podium, I want to acknowledge all the good work that occurs in our community on a daily basis by our Parks and Recreation staff. Will the following individuals please join me at the podium for a presentation? Mike Bitner, Lori Bye, Mike Gregory, and Christine Frederickson. Okay, proclamation, city of Glendale. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including Glendale, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through an increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Glendale, Arizona recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore a bit resolved that I, Mayor Jerry Wires, on behalf of the city of Glendale, that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Glendale. Witness thereof, I have here on two set in my hand this 11th day of June 2013. Signed by me and our clerk Pam Hannah. And who do I present this to? Present it to all of you, but I'll give it to you. I've never understood why we never have anybody taking pictures. We have to work on that. This proclamation, and I know I can speak for the council. The council, I'm sure, feels the same way I do. You know, our parks are critically important. You folks do a wonderful job. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are of routine nature or have been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They're intended to be acted upon in one motion by the council unless the council wishes to hear any of these items separately, and I will take public comment on those if there are those requests to speak. Mr. Bowers, will you please read the seven items on the consent agenda by number and by title?
The mayor members of the council. Number one is a liquor license. Number 5-10260, Vinnie and Joey's Place. Number two is the authorization for cooperative purchases of chemicals and services. Number three is the purchase of mobile data computers from Panasonic Systems Communication Company of North America. Number four is the Oracle database software maintenance and support renewal. Number five is the Oracle PeopleSoft software maintenance and support renewal. Number six is the fiscal year 2013-14, property liability and workman's compensation insurance renewals. Number seven is the fiscal year 2013-14, performing arts partnership program.
Very good, thank you. Councilmembers, are there any of those items which you'd like to hear separately? Seeing none? Vice Mayor Knack, is there anyone that wishes to speak on any of these items?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 7.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Martinez to approve a recommended action. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Your ayes have it, do have it, motion carries. Consent resolutions, moving on. Ms. Hannah, will you please read the seven consent resolutions by number and title, please?
Resolution number 4685, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, adopting the key priorities of the Glendale City Council. Resolution number 4686, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the city's participation in the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, National IPA, for the purpose of making cooperative purchases. Resolution number 4687, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a license agreement with CLK Developments AZLP for permission to use city real property located along 67th Avenue, north of Northern Avenue in Glendale, Arizona. Resolution number 4688, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Wickenburg for recyclable processing services. Resolution number 4689, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Economic Security for vending machine operations at the Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center in Glendale, Arizona. Resolution number 4690, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for an Indian Gaming Revenue Sharing Grant to Tohold Odom Nation on behalf of the Agila Youth Leadership Institute in the amount of $112,100. Resolution number 4691, new series. A resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Miracopa County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for an Indian Gaming Revenue Sharing Grant to Tohold Odom Nation on behalf of Heart for the City in the amount of $100,000.
Councilmembers, would any of you like to hear any of these consent resolutions separately?
Yes, Mayor.
And which one?
I'd like to pull number 14, please.
And number 13.
Yes, sir.
Number 13 and number 14. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on any of these items?
Yes, Mr. Ken Jones on number eight.
Mr. Jones? Like to speak on number eight, sir? You would, sir, for the record, state your name and just the district that you live in.
Ken Jones, Ocatillo District, Glendale. One thing that was important to Glendale was solved today. Michael Bidwell announced this afternoon the Cardinals will practice in our city this year. I know Mr. Bidwell and our mayor Jerry Wires have worked hard for this result. He said there are still details to work out with Glendale, but they will play here. I think we need to give congratulations to both our mayor and to Mr. Bidwell. I'm glad this is taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anything else?
You need to read number 14. I haven't written.
Was there any other speakers?
No. Wherever I have it written. I think you're back there. Just have Mr. Bowers read number 14.
Mr. Bowers, could you read? You want to do number 13 first and then 14? Number 13 first?
Mayor, members of the council. Number 13 is a resolution of support for a grant request by the Agila Youth Leadership Institute. Number 14, Mayor, is a resolution of support for a grant request by the Heart for the City. The speaker on both of those is Eric Strunk, Executive Director, Parks, Recreation, and Library Services.
May I consult? I can read through the item if you'd like me to, or I can answer questions directly. Your preference.
Let's do 13 first. Do you have a preference?
Okay. I can just ask you, we have a couple of questions.
Couple of questions. Well, let's do 13 first.
Okay, very good.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Strunk, on this particular one, you know, they're asking for council support for funding for this program. And my question is, when did that request come in? Was it a written request or a phone? And did we get some kind of a communication on this to the council? And if we did, I must confess, I missed it.
No, Mayor, Councilmember Martinez. The actual requests came in respectively approximately four weeks ago and then approximately two weeks ago, and there was no notification of council of these requests. It was, it's basically a process that we have in place that any nonprofit can enter into with the city. It's more or less a staff-driven analysis of whether or not they meet the merits of the Prop 202 funding requirements as laid out by the city. In both cases, both entities, 13, I apologize, agenda item number 13 and 14 respectively met that criteria, met the test, and we processed the agenda request.
Okay, so it's pretty much a pro forma procedure that you follow on this, and this is the way you've been doing it all the time?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez? Yes, sir, that is correct. We do have a policy process in place.
And if this is funded, this would be available to all, all youth in the city. It's wide open, as opposed to, I was, I was, also had a question for number, the next one, but this one is open to everyone.
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I can't speak for the applicant. I can speak to the process. The applicant is here tonight, but my understanding is on the Agila Youth Leadership Institute request, it would be open to those in the city. The second request would be limited to those in the 85301, 85302, and I believe the 85303 zip code districts. I believe that's the case. And that applicant is also here this evening and can answer specific questions, programmatic questions.
And just one more question. I know this takes some staff time, probably not too much. I don't know from what you've said, but can you give an idea of how much staff time is involved with a project like this?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, to process all the documents, to get it in the queue, you're probably looking at, you know, a couple, three hours. There's a template we follow. It's kind of established. And then if the grant is actually approved by the Tohono O'odham, or really any other gaming nation that we receive an application for, we have made the decision not to charge back any administrative time in the Finance Department for processing checks and dispersing those monies. We made a decision when we created the policies that these are community-based functions, that they enrich the community, and we felt we would absorb that on an end-kind basis.
Well, you asked my, the other question I was going to ask about just that question about how much time does that take, you know, for the processing? Because I imagine it's monthly, or I don't know what the timetable is, but...
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, each, each nation basically has their own rules that they follow when they disburse the funds. I don't know the specific funding pattern for the Tohono Odom Nation processing. I believe what occurs is the expenditures are incurred by the respective agency. They are then reimbursed, and that money will begin to flow in November of this year if both applicants are successful. They may get a lump sum, or they may get quarterly drawdowns. I believe in this case, it's probably a lump sum for both.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Excuse me, on item 13, just to follow up, Councilmember Martinez, we are not getting money from the Tohono Odom tribe. We are actually a conduit for that money to flow from the tribe to the organization. Is that not correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's absolutely correct. We, we do not take receipt of the funds other than what's required by law, and they're immediately disbursed to the applicant if they're successful in their request. We do not retain any. We are basically a pass-through, and that's the way that the state law was written and the way the voters approved Prop 202 some years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Strunk. And then on item 14, I will recuse myself from voting on this item as I sit on the Board of Directors for Heart for the City.
Okay, Councilmember Chevera.
Mayor, I would like to have this opportunity, if you don't mind. I'd like to ask Ms. Rosemary Ibar Hernandez to come up, and I have a few questions for her.
Okay, before she does that, did you have a question for Mr. Strunk?
Yes.
Let's do Mr. Strunk and then we'll do her.
Absolutely. On the one, for the zip codes, I was wondering why it's limited to just those three zip codes?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I can't speak for the applicant. I would surmise that those are income-eligible areas from a, from a federal CDBG standpoint. So there's probably, again, I can't speak for Mr. Eric Kaz, but that's probably the thinking that goes behind it. And, and the, the group that supplied for that particular grant, Heart for the City, their mission is to focus in kind of the income-challenged areas, and those are three zip code areas that traditionally the CDBG program, federal older moderate income areas are located in.
My thought is that there's other areas in the city that, you know, also have individuals that are, you know, at the poverty level or below. And I was just wondering why it was limited. It seems like a program coming into the city of Glendale would be, for youth, would be made available to, to everyone. And that's, that's the question that I had.
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, the applicant is here if you'd like to ask him that question.
Mr. Strunk, I'd like to ask a question before we bring Councilmember Chevera up. So I'm clear, because this was confusing to me a little bit. What we're being asked to do as the council is to approve a city-recognized nonprofit organization's application to somebody for money to help their organization. Is that, is that not correct? Is that kind of simplifying it? But isn't that exactly what we're doing?
Basically, under, under Prop 202, and in this particular case, nonprofits are eligible to apply for Prop 202 funds from the Tohono Odom Nation, provided they have a resolution of support from the jurisdiction. In this particular case, both entities want to do, focus their new programs in Glendale, so they are seeking that, that resolution of support.
Okay, so with that, my next question. We're not showing an endorsement of the donor. We're simply showing an endorsement of the charity that's asking for the donation?
Mayor, I think that's fair. In this particular case, you're focusing on the benefit to the community.
Right, okay.
Mayor?
Is it for Mr. Strunk? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Strunk. This, this has happened before. It's like the, when the Hila gave the Boys and Girls Club that it went through here, and with the direct funding that comes through for Heart in the city, no, for, from the heart that you get from the Hila reservation, it's the same thing. In this case, you're receiving the money for the, from the heart. The city is receiving that money. In this case, the Tohono will give the money directly to the company. Now we're doing is, is letting it go through. In the past, it went through Miracopa County. Because this is the first year that you're doing with the Tohono.
Okay. And my, my point was, is by any council member supporting this, you're not necessarily supporting the donor to the charity. You're supporting the charity receiving the money.
Mayor, I think that's a correct assumption.
All right, very good. Any other questions? Okay, we'll bring your person up next.
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. Mayor, for the record, if you'd state your name if you live in Glendale, the district, if not, then the city that you live in.
I am Rosemary Bar Hernandez. I'm the CEO and founder of Agila Youth Leadership Institute. I reside in Phoenix, Arizona, and I was, my father was here from Glendale.
Very good. Now, we have a question for Councilmember Chevera.
It's great to see you tonight, Mrs. Bar Hernandez. And did I say that right, or I said it in reverse? I don't know if I said your name right. It's just great seeing you. The question that I had is, first of all, your program has been in existence for how long?
We're going into our ninth year of existence.
And how many students this year, before I segue into my next question, how many students this year received scholarships?
We had, we graduated 76 seniors from all across the state of Arizona, including Glendale. And they're off to universities across the country, and together they collectively received $10,532,561 beyond the federal packages. So that's not counting loans, it's not counting work-study, it's not counting Pell Grants, it's pure scholarship.
And most, and these include Ivy League schools, schools across the nation, and also, a little segue to that is a lot of these children are probably the first in their generation to go to university, correct?
Right, we have 74% of our students are first generation. 87% of our students are free and reduced lunch. And one of your students who attends Raymond Iskallas, Alexa Salas, who was the junior state of America, is going to Penn. It was a, she was accepted all over the country, but it was a decision between Claremont McKenna and Penn, and she's fully funded to go to Penn State.
And Alexa also sat on our team advisory for Parks and Recreation. So, Rosemary, thank you so much for your hard work and diligence. And also, people don't understand that this started off as a passion you had over nine years ago. And I was blessed enough to be there when it was given birth. And not only have you ran with it, you've taken it to levels that most people could never, never expect.
We have over 800 students across the country in different universities, from MIT to Stanford, who are studying across the country and across the world. Some in cancer-cutting research, we have NASA interns. These are students who really do want to make a difference. So it's beyond academics. They come back and they pay it forward and help students who come behind them.
Rosemary, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. It's my passion to serve Glendale.
We have another question for you from Councilmember Martinez.
Good evening. One question. Did you request funding from other tribes for this program?
No, we haven't yet. This is the only tribe we're working with.
You mentioned you've been in existence for, what, nine years?
Nine years.
Have you had any other programs by any tribe at all prior to this one?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Can everybody hear Councilmember Martinez good tonight? All right, I told you I'd take care of it. Very good. Any other questions for this lady? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
If there's a time where someone can't hear me, please just wave at me and not...
Okay, do I have a motion to approve these action items?
Didn't Councilmember Martinez want to hear from Heart for the City about why the zip codes?
Did you have any other questions?
Did you have any other questions about the zip codes?
Well, that's, no, that's okay now. Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve these action items?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent resolutions number 8 through 14.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sherwood, and I have a second from Councilmember Alvarez.
Actually, it was just 13 and 14.
We didn't approve, we did not approve...
Actually, it's all of them.
Oh, you didn't approve?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we pulled them out and done them separate.
We should have voted on it.
We should have voted on it.
That'll work.
Again, I am...
The attorney says it's okay.
Okay, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like a separate vote on items 12 and 13.
12 and 13.
You want 13 and 14?
Excuse me, 13 and 14, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion for all the items. We have a request for a separate vote on item number 13. We'll do that first. I do have a motion to approve item 13.
Can I, can I revise my motion then to state, I make a motion that we approve consent resolutions number 8 through 12?
Second.
If you want to do it that way.
I think that's what we're being counselled to do.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. And we have a second from the Vice Mayor to approve recommended action items. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Your ayes have it, do have it, motion carries. And do I have a motion for item number 13?
I move that we accept resolution number 13.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sherwood, the second from Councilmember Chevera for item number 13 to approve the recommended action items. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay.
Nay.
Your ayes have it, do have it, motion carries for item number 13. Do I have a motion for item number 14?
Mayor, I accept, I move that we accept that we approve resolution number 14.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sherwood on item number 14, a second from Councilmember Shavira to approve the recommended action items. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay.
Nay.
Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries for item number 14. Moving on, we'll now move on to the review of bids and contracts. Mr. Bowers, can you please introduce item number 15 for us, please?
Item number 15 is an agreement with Habitat for Humanity Central Arizona, presented by Gilbert Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Lopez, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you, sir. Councilmembers, the city of Glendale originally allocated Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds in 2009 to address negative impact of foreclosures in our neighborhoods. In 2009, early in 2010, Habitat for Humanity Central Arizona was awarded a contract to acquire, rehabilitate, and resell foreclosed homes in our city. Up to now, Habitat has spent over 2.8 million in NSP funds purchasing, modernizing, and reselling 33 of these homes. As originally planned, the sale of some of these homes have created program income that will continue to be funded and help this effort on as required by the grant. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a new agreement with Habitat in the amount not to exceed $4,554,556, and to execute all necessary documents, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none. We have any speaker cards?
No, I don't have items.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
I move that we authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale of foreclosed homes, and Habitat for Humanity Central Arizona. Thank you.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Shavira, to approve recommended action, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. Mr. Bowers, will you please introduce item number 16?
Mayor, members of the council, number 16 is an agreement for construction services with Skyline Builders and Restoration Inc., and it'll be presented by Diane Schumake.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
Evening.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Wires and council. This is a request for city council to approve a new contract for construction services for third-party property damage claims for fiscal year 2013-14, not to exceed $75,000 using the state purchasing cooperative agreement. This agreement allows the city to manage property damage claims in cases where the city is responsible. Examples would be a citizen's broken water line, broken meter, damaged fencing, mailboxes, et cetera. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schumake. This is for damage that our employees do to...
Third parties, that's correct.
Let's just not do the damage anymore.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Fixed that problem, didn't we? All right, do you have any, you have any cards? No cards. Do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Martinez.
Mayor, I move that we approve agreement for construction services with Skyline Builders and Restoration Inc. for fiscal year 2013-14 in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Very good. Who was my second?
Second.
I have a council member Martinez for the motion, a second from Councilmember Shavira to approve a recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. Mr. Bowers, can you please introduce item number 17?
The mayor and members of the council, item 17 is Employee Assistance Program Contract with EAP Preferred for Fiscal Year 2013-2014, presented by Marcy Bravo Ortono.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers, mayor, councilmembers. Good, thank you. This is a request for city council to approve a new contract for services for the Employee Assistance Program. An Employee Assistance Program is an employee benefits program offered to city, offered to the city to intend to help employees deal with personal problems that might adversely affect their work, performance, health, and well-being. This program is not to exceed $25,260. This provider will be replacing the existing EAP program, APS Healthcare. This program will provide services for the city of Glendale active employees and COBRA participants for the fiscal year 2013-14. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve a new contract for services for the Employee Assistance Program in the amount not to exceed $25,260.
Second.
Second is from who? I have a motion from Councilmember Alvarez, a second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve recommended action. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. Mr. Bowers, item number 18, please.
Mayor, members of the council, item number 18 is an agreement with Arizona Public Service to underground overhead utility lines in a pedestrian alleyway. It'll be presented by Kathy Kolbath.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Good evening, mayor and council. The downtown alleyway project is a beautification project of the alley between 57th Avenue and 57th Drive, between Glendale Avenue and Glenn Drive. The project will improve the walkability of the downtown area for shoppers and visitors, and includes paving, landscaping, and other side amenities that will help create a pleasant pedestrian environment. A portion of the project also includes the undergrounding of the overhead utilities. This agreement with Arizona Public Service will allow APS to perform the construction work, and requires the city to reimburse APS for the cost of removing the overhead lines and undergrounding the electrical service. The cost to APS, for APS to underground the overhead utility lines is $237,017. This request is to approve the agreement with APS and to approve the appropriate budget transfer within the GO Transportation Capital Budget to complete the project. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kolbath. Councilmember, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hugh.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter to an agreement with Arizona Public Service to underground overhead utility lines in a pedestrian alleyway located in downtown Glendale.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Shavira, and Councilmember Martinez, to approve the recommended action item. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Please vote, all in favor, or all, let's back up here. All opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. Mr. Bowers, can you introduce item number 19?
Mayor, members of the council, item number 19 is award of a contract 13-21 to Heinfeld Meach and Company, PC, for the Glendale Onboard Transportation Program Performance Audit, presented by Kathy Kolbath.
Bowers, mayor and councilmembers, this is a request to authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement with Heinfeld Meach and Company for the performance audit of the Glendale Onboard Transportation Program. In 2001, the funding for the GO Transportation Program was approved by voters, and a part of that requires an independent audit to be conducted. Every three years, the audit reviews performance, fiscal accountability, and is consistent with a voter-approved plan. Two previous audits have been completed, one in 2006 and one in 2010. Three proposals were received in response to the request for proposal, and Heinfeld Meach and Company was selected as the most responsive, most responsive bidder. The terms of the agreement is for a three-year period and includes an option to extend for an additional two years. It is anticipated that the audit will take approximately eight months to complete, and the cost of the audit will not exceed $211,723. The funds are programmed in the fiscal year budget 2014 transportation account. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with Arizona Public Service, APS, to underground overhead utility lines in a pedestrian alleyway located in downtown Glendale.
We're already done that one.
Oh, 19, oh, all right. How about we do this? How about we, mayor, I move that we request for unauthorized the city manager to enter an agreement with Heinfeld Meach and Company, PC, for performance audit of the Glendale Onboard Transportation Program in the amount not to exceed $211,723, and authorize the city manager at his discretion to extend the agreement for an additional two years.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Shavira, and a second from Councilmember Hugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. Mr. Bowers, we're up to number 20.
Mayor, members of the council, item 20 is the award of a proposal for landscape services with Artistic Land Management, Inc., and is presented by Craig Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Good evening, mayor and members of council. This is a request for city council to award a proposal and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Artistic Land Management Incorporated for landscape services in an annual amount not to exceed $125,000. This agreement will provide landscape maintenance at five Water Services plant sites and two Public Works Department sites. A joint panel of staff worked with Materials Management to issue a request proposal in November of 2012. Four proposals were received, and Artistic Land Management received the highest score. The proposal also contains an option to extend the agreement at the city manager's discretion for an additional four years in one-year increments. It's staff's recommendation to award the proposal and authorize the city manager enter into an agreement with Artistic Land Management Incorporated. That concludes my presentation, ready for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, any questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move we award proposal RFP 13-09 and authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with Artistic Land Management, Inc. for landscaping services at Water Services and Public Works Department sites in an annual amount not to exceed $125,000. The proposal includes an option to extend agreement at the city manager's discretion for an additional four years in one-year increments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was a race, but I think you won. I have a motion from Councilmember Sherwood, and a second from the Vice Mayor. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. And, Mr. Bowers, we're on to ordinances now. Can you please introduce item number 21?
Yes, mayor, members of the council, item 21 is the fiscal year 2012-13 budget amendments, be presented by Sherri Sherhammer.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request for city council to consider and approve the fiscal year 2013 budget amendments. Total budget appropriation across all funds remains unchanged for fiscal year 13. Those budget amendments that affect the general fund will be covered by reallocating unused appropriation authority in general fund departments in general fund-supported operations, including salary savings from vacancies, as well as a $678,000 cash transfer from the general fund fund balance. Staff is requesting council to waive reading beyond the title and adopt an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2013 budget amendments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shermer. Councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none, we have any speaker cards?
Yes, mayor, Kenneth Sturgis.
Ken Sturgis, if you could, sir, for the record, state your name and the district you live in, if you live in the city, if not, the city that you live in.
Yes, my name is Kenneth Sturgis, and I am a resident of the Yaca district.
Very good.
Thank you, mayor and city councilmembers. Tonight, the city's total budget appropriation across all funds remains unchanged, which I am pleased to hear, meaning the arena management fee is still $6.5 million. And it has been reported that there were four bids received for Managing Jopping.com Arena. Your own tentative timeline was Monday, June 10, in selecting those candidates. We should at least know their names. According to Glendale's Own City Code, under Division 2, Purchasing Procedures, Section 2-145B, "Proposals shall be opened publicly at the time and placed designated in the request for proposals. The name of each proposal and such other relevant information," pardon me, "as the materials manager shall designate, shall be publicly read and recorded as required by the materials manager." However, there is still this long, four-year NHL parade of potential owners of the Coyotes. George Gosby's group, Renaissance Sports and Entertainment, or RSE, is the latest, and I do mean the latest, from Jerry Reinsdorf and Ice Age Holdings, some of them are part of RES's group, to Matthew Holcizer, who couldn't make a $100 million parking deal work, nor his bid to buy the St. Louis Blues for $120 million, to Greg Jamison, a $300 million arena management deal over 20 years, but he couldn't find enough money before the January 31 deadline, to Darren Pastor, his bid was for $277 million, but it was rejected by the NHL, and now George Gosby. The question is, will this parade finally stop, or does it move on to somewhere else? From the May 30 Forbes article, Phoenix Coyotes, $170 million sale to be partially funded by the NHL. Wait a minute, didn't Pastor offer $277 million? The breakdown in costs are $45 million of equity from RSE, reportedly about $10 million contributed, contributed, pardon me, by Mr. Gosby. The NHL usually requires 50% equity, that would be about $85 million, but this group is somehow getting a discount at only 26%. $120 million loan financed by the Fortress Investment Group, possibly a lender of last resort. Their debt will be serviced by the arena management fee paid by the city of Glendale. Now, why would that be if there's an open RFP bid that has not been officially awarded? Is there some predetermined outcome we don't know about? $85 million loan from the NHL apparently is working capital, with assurances the NHL will have RSE receive the maximum revenue sharing, and no repayment on the NHL loan for the first five years. I think even Bernie Madoff would be shaking his head over this creative bid of financing. With all of this past history, as stated by my good friend Killian, would any reasonable person blame Glendale? Glendale and its citizens has been over backwards for the NHL in supporting these potential owners through these various deals. We gave the NHL at least $50 million over a couple of years, supposedly just as insurance, yet all of these potential owners have turned out to be just more false promises. History will not be kind to the NHL over this saga. So I'll ask my question once again, how much are we, the citizens of Glendale, getting in return? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have another?
Not for this.
There is no other card. Okay, that was the only card that we had on that. Ms. Hannah, will you please read the ordinance by number and title?
Ordinance number 2846, New Series, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing amendments to the adopted fiscal year 2012-2013 budget by transferring appropriation authorization between budget items and authorizing cash transfers from the general fund.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 2846, New Series.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, and a second from Councilmember Martinez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will conduct a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Sherwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Nay.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Shavira?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion does carry. Request for future workshop and executive session. Our next item of agenda is the council request for a future workshop. Vice Mayor Knack, I believe that you have a request to make of this?
I do, thank you, mayor. I move that we hold special city council voting meeting on Friday, June 14, at 9:00 a.m. in the city council chambers. I further move that we hold the next regularly scheduled city council workshop on Tuesday, June 18, 2013, at 1:30 p.m. in the city council chambers, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03. Lastly, I move that we hold a special city, a special city council voting meeting on Friday, June 28, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. in the city council chambers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Martinez, to approve, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, please vote nay. Here's your ayes, have it, do have it, motion carries. We'll now open up the next portion to our citizen comment of the meeting. Council makes this opportunity available to the citizens to bring information and business before the council that's not included on the printed agenda. The council can only act on matters that are printed on the agenda, but may refer to the matter to the city manager for follow-up.
Mr. Ken Jones.
We have one card?
We have three.
Three cards, okay. The first one, Mr. Jones, again, if, and I know you live in the city, sir, if you just state your name and the district that you live in.
Ken Jones, Hockative District, Glendale. This council is into its sixth month of meeting together. That means you have had roughly 10 workshops and 10 council meetings. It also means that you went behind closed doors for those hated executive sessions about... about 10 times. What you do now with two big issues will define what kind of a government body you are. First, are you going to use sound business judgment when you award the management of the arena to a company? We've had some judgments in the past by previous councils that certainly weren't sound. They were like big giveaways. Next, when will you start working more in the public and do less behind closed doors? Ask yourself this. How many things have you discussed and talked about in executive sessions that could have been in the open where the public wouldn't feel like they were being shut out? I'm speaking for a lot of taxpayers. When I say the people's patience is wearing very thin about those two subjects, they're wearing thin about hockey and lack of transparency. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Bill Dembski.
Mr. Dembski. Ken, sir, your name, and then just the district you live in. We don't need your address.
Bill Dembski, I live in Saguaro District. Reading the paper, it's just completely nauseous, some of the stuff that's disclosed. The main thing was, you know, we got $324 million for the coyote, $50... I was here a month ago. I read in the paper where this executive director, Schumhammer, or whatever her name is, disclosed in a paper that my taxes are going down. What the heck? I just got a assessed valuation one up from the county assessor, so I know my taxes are going up. So then, a couple of days ago in the paper, I see where my primary tax rate doubled for this coming budget year, doubled from .225 to .497. So right now, I'm paying $40 something on my primary. It's gonna go up to $80 something. On my secondary, I'm paying $300 something, and it's gonna go up to $400 something. So Schumhammer, you know, like I said, I worked for the city of Glendale for 17 years. I got to know, you know, there were so many incompetent, completely ignorant people. The only reason they got into position they were is because nepotism, or church member, family, or whatever, people that didn't belong where they were, making these decisions like right now. My property taxes are going doubling, my property taxes are doubling because the executive director a month ago, I had read in the paper where she says my taxes are going down. From there, it went down. Also, in this newspaper article, it had 1,010 city of Glendale full-time employees, 1,010. It costs us taxpayers $97,693,070. It comes out to average, I know not everybody makes this, average is $96,725. Not everybody, I know that. But there's so many salaries, 150, 170, 200,000. That's for salary, pension, and healthcare, $97 million. There's only 6% of the people in the United States have a pension provided by their employer. 6% of all Americans only have a pension provided by their employer. Consequently, you know, especially what I read, the thing that really got me was this secret meeting, three secret meetings, trying to circumvent the law, the state law about the open meetings. Thank God Councilman Alvarez wasn't part of the group. But, you know, our taxpayer dollars, and what is so secret about, you know, what's coming down out? My property taxes are gonna triple because of the bunches why I have secret meetings making these secret deals, like with Beasley, $50 million, which should have cost $10 million, all these secret deals. You know, consequently, I gotta do without, my neighbors gotta do without, because our property taxes are going up because of all these secret deals by the city council and the mayor. But today, I filed a complaint with the state attorney general for violation of the open meetings law. You know, I talked to so many people, what the heck is going on? Secret meetings with our tax dollars? What is going on? Consequently, my taxes are doubling. You know, it's to the point right now, I can't afford it. Just on my block alone, the last couple of years, six people lost their houses, short sale, foreclosures, or they just walked away. So the secret meeting's going on, screw the little guys, screw, if they lose their house or whatever, and they gotta lose everything they own because of these secret deals going on with all these rich fat cats from out of state, it's so... Like I said, I hope to God my complaint with the state attorney general really, you know, and from what he told me, it's gonna be out of your pockets. If there was a violation, state law, open meetings law, it's coming out of your pocket. And I hope to God it comes to that. But like I said, you know, Schumhammer, whatever, last month, she's telling me my taxes are going down, and today I learned my taxes are doubling, you know. Like I said, 17 years with the city, I was flabbergasted every time I turned around. So many incompetent people don't know what the heck they're doing, consequently, my property taxes and everybody else's property taxes going up, highest city sales tax in the nation, you know, whatever. But we'll see how far this open meetings violation goes.
Thank you. You have one more?
Yes, whoops. Arthur Thruston.
Mr. Therson.
It's Thruston, Thruston, Thruston. He will tell you.
Evening, sir. If you...
That didn't count from my time star.
No.
If, again, sir, if you'd state just your name and the district you live in, not your address, please.
How can I get any publicity like that, Mayor? Okay, my name is Arthur Leroy Thruston. I come from the Cactus District in Glendale, Arizona.
Very good, thank you.
And the first thing I would like to do is I would like to back up about three, or four, five, or six months, because I didn't take the opportunity to congratulate each and every one of you candidates that won your position in your race for your office in your district. Council Sherwood, I've always respected Alvarez, Knack, Wires...
Wires.
Don't correct me, I know the difference, I want my time for that. Wires, Martinez, Hugh, and Shaverah. You're good, solid folks, and I appreciate all the time, effort, and energy you're doing. And I think there are lots and lots and lots out here that say that. So congratulations, especially, now I want to mention that you have a new interim city manager. I believe that, if I'm not incorrect, to say Dick Bowers. And I am totally fascinated by the action and activities exhibited by your new interim city manager, since he's been put in his position by you learned people. So far, not one thing that he's done of any consequence, I think, is anything except perfectly positive, go-forward situations, including selfishly, since I suggested that we promote all the interim managers that he just promoted after he took his position into full-time positions. I really appreciate that you've done a wonderful job in that area. I do have fault with him, though, and nobody's perfect, but I don't know how to work it around. I can't figure out how, he's got to figure out how to appoint himself as a permanent manager, because I'm totally sold on him in this respect, and I really would like to put a word in solid in that. If there's any possibility, we can twist his arm, break his legs, or whatever we need to do to get him to stay, because I really thank you and respect what you've done. The thing that I have a complaint with now back in my normal dry female yelling and grumbling self is evil or the appearance of evil? Evil or the appearance of evil? When I was growing up, they said, do as well and good as you can, be as honest and straight as you possibly can. I'm not using myself in any example at all. But it's more than that. Do not participate in the appearance of evil. Now, when I pick up the papers in the Glendale Star, and it says, you're secret, and you're holding up in the back lots and making decisions that are not public, I think that's questionable. I didn't say it was evil, and it may not be immoral, but it's certainly not the way to do business in the city of Glendale. This headline, the whole paper, shows each one of you, secret, private, little meetings. Oh, it tells who it was with. It was with the guys that had been buying us off for five, six, 10 years with our millions of dollars, and that's not right. And so I'm saying to you, each and every one of you, every one of those meetings should have been refused, and you should have had a big, open meeting here, let the guys come up here and talk, and we'll all come and listen. Now, the thing that I like about it mostly is last year, we talked about a duck, you know, quack, 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 that's my duck, and the distressed ducks. And then we talked about dodo birds and stuff like that. But now, I want to change the subject to vultures. Vultures. Now, I don't know how a vulture sounds, I never been able to find a voice track for a vulture, but these guys that are coming in here, actually, you're a hunter, Mayor, you should know what a vulture sounds like. But anyway, these guys have been here every... These guys have been here time after time after time with their hats in their hands, begging, ripping and tearing, and when a sucker is dry. The first time, it was Holsizer. Oh, he was the king and the savior. The NHL guys came here, quit checking the time, I got a little bit more.
About 30 seconds.
Oh, come on. And then it was Jamison, and they came in here and lied and said he was the greatest thing in the world. They came in here and lied about Holsizer and said he was the greatest thing in the world. If we give him our millions, we give him our millions, we'll give him our millions, we'll be great. Now they're coming in here and saying, the new vultures were really the right ones, and the guy that didn't even get selected by them had the better package for the city of Glendale, and he's the best one. One thing closing, I'm going to request kindly that Vice Mayor Knack and Councilmember Martinez reclusive themselves from any vote that they have on the hockey agreement, because they participated for several straight years with positive, posi, posi votes, and anything they do forward has got to be a questionable conflict of interest. I know, I'm up.
Thank you, Arthur. Okay, you have any other cards?
Nope.
Okay, that does conclude the citizen's comment portion of the meeting, and we will move on to the council comments and suggestions, starting with Councilmember Sherwood.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez.
None.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to thank all the staff for the city of Glendale. I think day in and day out, you do a good job. Thank you.
Councilmember Hugh?
Thank you, I'd just like to comment on the watermelon festival that we had Saturday, and congratulate Councilmember Sherwood on running the beauty contest.
He didn't win it, though.
We didn't win it either. Don't we have a car show coming up? Thank you.
Councilmember Shaverah?
Mayor, none at this time.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
None, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I am gonna make a comment, because I try not to make a lot of comments. Two things I want to make a comment about, one is executive sessions. I've asked numerous times in the past that we limit those absolutely as many times as possible, and one of the things that was brought up to me is there has been some executive meetings that were posted that we could have that we didn't have, and that was done as a matter of convenience in case something came up last minute we needed to. But secondly, I still feel very strongly that if we don't have to have an executive session, I would prefer not to. If we could combine issues that might be put off for two weeks or longer. I know that executive session does have a purpose, and I know frequently it's irritating to the citizens, not understanding that sometimes it's contracts that we're working on, it's issues with personnel. And so I can tell you, a lot of the things that we do isn't the secret behind the scenes that a lot of the public wants to believe, because I sat there six months ago and felt the same way a lot of you have felt. So again, that would be my request, is that we really limit those literally as much as possible, and I think probably the council probably agrees with me. And then the other thing, we do have this Saturday, our second event, which will be the Cruising in Downtown Glendale. The first one was such a success that the footprint was actually enlarged by almost four times, and again, at zero cost to the city, it's private enterprise coming in, bringing people into the city that aren't Glendale residents, that are spending their money here, and what an awesome problem to have, what we did last time where we had restaurants literally running out of food. That's the kind of stuff that I think will help us get out of these problems that we have in our city right now. Other than that, I hope everyone has a safe trip home. Drownings are definitely up right now, so please, everyone be aware of young children around the swim pools. With that, we're adjourned.